Yeah, five thirty.
That's all.
Hi, guys. And you want to lead us in the pledge?
That's fine.
Thanks.
Well, it's good thing you showed up.
We'll talk.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltzy.
President.
Mark Serbuk.
Eric.
Frank Scott.
Eric.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Um, we had a Parks and Rec meeting today and raising some rates and like up to the commissioners.
Where would you like that at?
Uh, new, new business is fine.
Um.
Right there before claims.
You want before claims or you want underneath new business?
We've got claims under new business.
So we have since that agenda.
Wherever you want it.
See, Parks and Rec.
Go.
Go ahead.
I know Tim is going to add this to his conversation, but um uh, window county building, window project.
Unfinished?
Um, yeah.
Any other additions or corrections?
Well, I'll move to approve with correction, with addition.
Motion Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declarations of conflicts of interest. Any commissioners?
No, I have none.
None.
Review of minutes, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes.
Okay.
It's all a little rough. I'll make a motion to approve the regular minute, regular meeting minutes for September twenty fifth.
Motion Commissioner Scott.
For.
Support from Commissioner Wiltzy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four B, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, closed session meeting minutes. I didn't see those.
Well. Make everybody else approve, so.
I also support.
Motion Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serbuk.
Oh, wait.
Oh, there's not much. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries item four C, October second, twenty twenty five, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Motion. For to manage.
Motion Commissioner Wiltzy.
For.
Support from Commissioner Mahew. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries public comment and agenda manners only. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
Nobody has ever seen that.
Correspondence, we received a lot of correspondence, primarily related to the opposition to House of Representatives' proposed revenue sharing reductions from Alpena County, Baraga County, Clinton County, Crawford County, opposition to MDHHS competitive procurement procedure, um, opposition to House of Representatives' proposed revenue sharing reduction, Eaton County, uh, and Genesee County, there was three from them and Lake County, those have all been received and filed. Item seven, uh, consent agenda. How do you guys feel about that?
Well.
Was there any you guys would like to?
The appointment, the appointments we're setting up, somebody had to talk to us, so.
You guys, seven C will pull?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Everything else.
Everything else is fine. I'm, I'm fine with the indigent and the zoning with that was well gone on. Um.
We have resolution to approve.
Good.
Resolution to approve zoning map amendment one dash two five, seven B, resolution to approve zoning tax amendment three dash one two five. Item seventy, resolution to approve a contract to provide indigent council, seven E, resolution to oppose Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, competitive procurement plan. Seven F, resolution to accept a bid for snow removal and seasonal maintenance services.
Make a motion that we approve those items on the consent agenda.
Motion for Commissioner Serbuk, support from Commissioner Mahew. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes, item seven C, resolution to appoint members to the Ogma County Board of County Canvassers. This resolution is sponsored by County Clerk Fred Gilner. The Michigan election law established a four-member board of county commit canvassers in every Michigan county. It is the duty of the Board of County Canvassers to conduct all recounts of elections in cities, townships, villages, school districts, metropolitan districts, or any other districts. Members of the Board of County Canvassers are appointed for terms of four years beginning on November first, following their appointment. Approval of the resolution will appoint one representative nominated by each of the two political parties casting the greatest number of votes for Secretary of State at the November twenty twenty fourth election. The term of each appointment member will expire on October thirty first, twenty twenty nine.
Um, the other, one candidate is here, the other one is available by phone in five minutes, so.
The one that's here, would they like to come up? Come right up, sir.
I hear you, wait.
I'm sorry. Would you like to introduce yourself? Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
John Wing.
Okay.
Back on, I've been on the board for twelve terms, a lot more boards. On border review. So pretty much familiar with districts and Italian and votes and so forth like that. That's why we love the application.
Okay, this is for the Democratic Party, correct? Okay, do you guys have any questions for the gentleman?
No, I, I don't have any.
I don't exactly know John for a couple, I said, I've known John for a couple of weeks now, so.
I knew Mark since he had a super big.
Bird.
Ah, he's very good.
I do have one comment. Go ahead. Um, just because it was, the question was raised to me and I just to clarify to all of you guys, he does have family members that are elected officials and I did call the Bureau of Elections and they spent a lot of time making sure that it was fine. It is not a conflict of interest. Um, so that's not an issue.
Yeah, my family's been, my mother was a township clerk, brother was a road commissioner, I was a county commissioner. Laurie's been a trustee and a clerk, so we've
Scott.
Public service for quite a few years.
Thank you for your involvement.
Don't forget Scott and Judge.
And Scott.
Count sometimes.
Oh, he's conservative. Oh, okay, I see why.
Any questions for him? Thank you, sir. Do you have any questions for, for us?
The, like I say, mostly I've been around, so I kind of know him, but you know, as far as job and responsibilities and so forth, just something different, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And who, who's going to be on the phone?
Ed Miller. Um.
They were out of town.
Yeah, they were out of town.
Did we, did we find any other information out? We, I guess what has taken place since our committee of the whole with this? I guess I don't know who I'm talking to.
Yeah, you're talking to the clerk on this.
With what?
Uh, like we had asked, uh, were, were all the ones that, that, uh, applied for this position or filled out applications, were they invited to be here?
Yeah.
Have you spoke to any of them since last week?
Uh, yeah.
Did they have anything they wanted to say to us?
No, no, just Maria is interested for the Republican. She, that's who they want.
Okay.
And then I spoke to the Williamses with, in regards to the Bureau of Elections and then um, Ed Miller was out of town. I sent a letter to him last week inviting him to come here. They've been out of town, um. And then I've been in contact with his wife, trying to figure out a way for them to be able to participate.
Okay, so would you guys, oh, I'm sorry.
No, so they said ten minutes.
Okay, we'll just go on and come back. I mean.
Okay.
Are you guys okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, uh, Parks and Rec, the, this is where you wanted under new business parks?
Yeah, we, we went, we did a comparison, uh, with other surrounding campgrounds and stuff like that and we were kind of low. So, uh, and we're anticipating getting the electric, uh, upgraded this winter. By way of that grant and things, so, um, we wanted to, uh, to take our lot rent from three dollars up to forty five dollars because it'll have the higher amperage plugs at all of them. And the fifty amp pull through, uh, at fifty seven, from forty five dollars to fifty seven dollars, and if there happens to be two campers, it'd be an aggregate price of a hundred dollars. Our monthly go from six hundred to nine fifty and our seasonal go from twen- eighteen hundred to twenty three hundred plus seventy five dollars a month for electricity. We did not previously charge for electricity.
Oh, really?
Really, we were at eight hundred.
Included in the.
Yeah, it was included in, so.
If I can basically check team her when you're done.
They base, basically, they were sitting there at the campsite for just pennies over ten dollars a day.
But, but, and you're paying the.
Re-electricity, yeah. And I would imagine, you know, as efficient as those are in the middle of summer, you run an air conditioner a lot. So compared, did some comparisons with other, other campgrounds and, and most of them are metered or, or, um, charge uh, a daily rate for the seasonal, for electricity for the seasonals. They don't do it for temporaries, but they'll do it for the seasonals. Uh, and then, uh, uh, we went from twenty five dollars to thirty dollars on a tent site. And we, we give a twenty amp service at the tent site. Um, and then there's just a reduction in price from on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, it'll be at thirty five dollars, but if they happen to stay up Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, they'll pay forty five at those, those nights. So the committee was, is asking the commissioners to approve the changes for twenty twenty six.
How much was the increase from the camp? Sorry, I got the tent, what was the campsite from?
Thirty five to forty five, but next year, all sites will have fifty amps available to.
Forty five is Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yep.
So Monday through Wednesday is still the thirty five per gallon rate.
And the last time it was increased was when?
Two thousand twenty three.
That were still pretty reasonable rates. I mean, I don't know much about camping, but.
Well, I can only compare.
We've got, we, we got the breakdown of everything, so he's curved and what.
You guys want that tonight?
If, yeah, if it possible, then we can start putting it on the website and stuff like that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Serbuk, did you have something to add?
No, Tim does, Tim does.
Would you mind if we could take this into the cow next week so that we could actually physically see this because you've got already, uh, a fee schedule that you've adopted for fiscal year twenty six, so we'll want to amend that and I don't want to go off my notes to remember what these numbers were and where they plug in. I think, I think you might have mentioned a couple of new ones anyway.
Okay.
You don't mind doing that? If it's a twenty twenty six year issue anyway, we've got some time to, you know, make sure we don't run through this.
Okay. All right.
You have something, Commissioner Serbuk?
That was it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll table it to.
There'll be more to come. Claims, uh, wow, the total's seven hundred forty two thousand, five hundred thirty two dollars and ninety seven cents.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the claims.
I will support that.
Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serbuk. I believe you too, um, reviewed claims. Do you want to take the floor, Commissioner Scott?
Of course, you know, the seven hundred nowadays is, is that, is that wages all included now, so of course, now the number seems to be very high, but otherwise, otherwise the expenses are really, really pretty low. Uh, the biggest one in there is two patrol cars that has been, have been ordered and are almost here, so that was about a hundred and ten thousand out of a hundred and seventy two. So really, it's not much at all. If you look down the claim sheet, you'll see that there is nothing that's really, really big. Um, there is a prepaid in there for insurance. That's over a hundred thousand, is that liabilities? You know, Tim?
Um, let me look at it here, I should be able to tell you.
Yeah, it's there on the front sheet, but number thirty three.
Thirty three, yeah. Yeah, it's probably the liability slash umbrella policy, just glancing at it here.
Yeah. Um, it's not in the other sheets for explanation, but it's there as prepaid.
Right. There might be, uh, some workers comp built into that as well.
Okay. Okay.
Anything, Commissioner Serbuk, to add to that?
Rancheros has done as we requested, or the sheriff has made sure that that happens. They are now itemizing the meals.
Good.
On their bill. Um. Last month, what was in claims was a hundred and twenty seven meals. And it was thirteen eighty eight fifty, which works out to ten dollars and ninety three cents a meal. Um, the only other thing there's, uh, veterans was able to utilize some of that grant funding, they, uh, office central for fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty eight dollars and fifty one cents.
Good.
The consumer's bill for this building, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty five dollars and thirty four cents, four hundred and ninety nine dollars and change a day. Wow. So I hope that all these, uh, upgrades that we're making is going to reflect some savings in that bill.
The bad news is there is another rate increase that we just approved.
Yeah.
Was there any inmate housing in there?
The inmate housing was not in there. Randy, uh, got thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars for the winter tax mailings was in there. Um, indigent council wasn't bad. There was one pretty large bill, but that was a result of one attorney in the representation of the, uh, homicide murder suspect. So. Other than that, and I mean, it wasn't bad.
It will get long next time trouble.
It was charged to the county?
Oh, it's indigent council, indigent council, yep, yep. That was it.
Any questions for them, guys? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Unfinished business. We have a resolution to establish road commissioner compensation rates. Let me read this, so we all kind of confused by when I read it last night.
You want me to read it for you?
I was just going to read this part. Sure, go ahead.
Okay, well, it sounds like it hurts. Uh, where is it? Here?
Item ten, yeah.
What's that?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, nine, okay. Added the September eleventh, two thousand twenty five, Riddler meeting, the board was asked to consider changes to the compensation plan for the county road commissioners. Compensation rates were set upon adoption of twenty five, uh, resolution twenty five dash twelve on January twenty third, twenty twenty five. On October eighth, twenty twenty five, the Ogma County Road Commission and Board of Public Works formally requested modifications to the road commissioner compensation rates. Approval of this resolution will amend the road commissioner compensation rates to increase the salary uh, of the road commission chairperson by five hundred dollars per year to the annual rate of four thousand dollars. And increase the road commissioners by five hundred dollars per year to an annual rate of three thousand five hundred. Increase the road commission per diem for attendance at day meetings from two hundred to three fifty and eliminate per diem for attendance at night meetings. The revised compensation scheduled would have an immediate effect.
I want to entertain a motion to approve this.
I will make a motion to approve it.
Motion Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk. I have some questions that, who attended the road commission meeting? Because I guess this was a pretty lengthy discussion. Can you let us know?
It wasn't too lengthy, but they did talk about it quite a bit, yeah. Well, it has been, it has been every, every two weeks, they've been talking about it, so.
Um, can you tell me how they came up with these numbers?
Well, um, they, they want to have an incentive to come to the meetings.
Agreed.
And that's why they pushed the per diem up. And then, uh, Commissioner Marshall is the only one that is on, that had healthcare coming because Commissioner Winter and Shelton are both at Medicare rates now. So, um, they, uh, Mr. Marshall asked if he could pay for his healthcare a hundred percent, but wanted to make a little bit more to do that. Um, so, uh, I don't know what the total. They figured out what total was for the year on every meeting.
Yeah, it's.
And then they debated, they debated a little bit about, they're every other week now, so it's it's, well, at, uh, twenty six meetings a year, they, they were talking about maybe going down to two a month. And that way, uh, you know, they'd pay, it'd be two weeks last, or.
It's in here. It wasn't much, but.
No, it wasn't much.
There was a comparison, um, this chart in here. They had a comparison too.
They also talked about, uh, night meetings, uh, going to night meetings. I, I told them, you know, our Zoom worked great. Uh, if, for the most part, I mean, not a lot on it today, but, um, I told them that that, that's a good way for people to, to zoom in from daytime. Um, they, they had tried that a few years ago. It didn't make much difference at all. They went back to just daytime. So, um.
Did they all agree upon this?
So basically, ninety one hundred dollars for, if you come to every meeting.
Every so.
Every, every, all twenty six meetings, if you came to them, it'd be ninety one hundred dollars plus that uh, thirty five hundred, so they'd be almost what we're making.
Yeah, like twelve, it says right here, it's on this chart that they gave us, twelve thousand.
All right.
My, my, my issue, I don't have an issue with that, that increase from the, uh, meetings, the two hundred to the the three thirty, it's just the, why did they decide I know no nighttime incentive? What I mean by that is our townships, you know, the spring when the roads are a mess, the two things we hear so much about is blight and roads.
Yeah, they said they.
Um, hang on, they do, they come to those meetings and primarily they get beat up most of the time. Um, so, uh, having there being no incentive i- and it's very difficult for the board to sit there when they don't have the answers or not the road commission, they're trying to communicate, they're kind of going in between all of this, so having them there when there's a crisis on which again is typically in the spring is, is incentive is nice. Um, it helps with lines of communication and the overall public, but why, why no incentive at night, like something little? Something, our township meetings are in the evening.
Right, right.
I was saying, every meeting, but, or they have to go to every meeting, but it'd be nice to see them once in a while.
Well, they, they said that they would continue to go to night meetings. Um, they just didn't set up per diem for it.
Do you, do you see them at, in the township meeting?
Well, I haven't lately, no, but I have when, again, when there's a crisis, I have it, Logan at Mills, they used to show up, especially in the spring when, when the, the roads were a mess, when I covered that area. Um, not real often, but it is nice to see them when they're absolutely needed.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Serbuk, do you have any, were you there?
No, I was not there.
I guess what are your guys' thoughts? I don't have a problem with this increase. It's a quite pretty big jump from two hundred to three thirty, but I was just wondering how they came up with that figure and then no night incentive.
Yeah.
But this is obviously what they want?
Yes. They, they hashed it back and forth. Every two weeks, they talk back and forth about it and this is what they came up with.
Anything, guys?
That's what they want.
I'm fine.
Their budget.
But I agree, I just, again, I like, it's nice, but there's incentive for them to go and get beat up once in a while.
All right.
For their fifty bucks or a hundred bucks.
All right.
Anybody want to entertain a motion? Or you guys did, excuse me, correct?
Yes.
Any further, any further comments? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
And then also the window project, Commissioner Wiltzy?
Um, well, obviously, you know, this is something that we've been talking about for, for a while now, and we know that we had this situation arise where there was windows that weren't on the RFPs and we've been finger pointing and everything else going on. At the end of the day, I just, that we need to learn from it and make sure that it never happens again. Um, we need to grow stronger from it. This past Friday was brought to my attention, but on the RFP for the window project. Under project requirements and scope number one, it clearly states one for one replacement of windows with new energy efficient windows. Existing windows are listed below. Bidders will be responsible for confirming the number, location, and measurement of each. That really surprised me. I was not aware that that had been RFPs. And to, to me by reading that, um, I look at it as the contractor is responsible. It says bidders will be responsible for confirming the number, location, and measurement of each. Oh, I just felt that it was a conversation that we need to have. I would imagine that we need to have our legal look at it. Um, it's just a bad deal all the way around. You know, we have a local contractor that does very good work. Um, but it clearly says in the RFP, what I just read to you guys twice. So I just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention and see what your guys' thoughts were.
That's why it didn't make any sense to me, the, me, this should have been pretty easy to track. This, this is what you, this is this Anderson window that you're sitting in front of us, correct?
Yep, yes.
Tim, do you want to add to this?
I do. You've got the rules, I guess, from the contractor that they received when they priced out those eleven windows and it does match what they put on the. And following up to what Commissioner Wiltzy said about what was in the RFP, I, I need to own that. Uh, I was asked last meeting about whether there was, uh, anything in the, uh, project that protected the county for an oversight like this, and my response was no, and clearly I was wrong. Um, if we did include this, uh, in the RFP, we'll remind you that, uh, uh, contractor, when he put the change order together, did not charge any additional labor, so what we're paying in that change order is strictly the materials themselves, so windows, uh, um, drywall that goes in, the siding on the outside, the framing and, and so on. Uh, and that's it, but to the extent that this changes your opinion about that change order, um, you know, again, it's, uh, you know, Don obviously is on the line here, listening to this as well. Uh, I, I suspect there is an avenue, if you wanted to rescind that change order, that you could do that. I would suggest to you that I, in my opinion only, uh, that it would not be fair to necessarily, um, force the contractor to pay for those materials. They've already owned their component to this by saying we're not charging for labor, but that's strictly my opinion. Obviously, you are the decision-making body, uh, and if you wanted to rescind that resolution and have me work with the attorney about, um, uh, coming to some other, uh, conclusion, I'm certainly willing to do that.
Uh, with this that we're looking at, is this proof that eleven missed, eleven windows were missed on account? Because this doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, these are the eleven that they ordered in addition to the ones that were listed in the RFP, uh, that they ordered after discovering that they were missing windows. So this is you know, the quote they got for, for those replacements.
But this doesn't answer the question. The original bid that they gave or, or itemized is that, did anybody look at how many items were on there compared to, this just says that this just says how many more they ordered.
Well, just can I add to that?
Go ahead.
Um, underneath that verbiage that I read about the bidders will be responsible, then there is letters from A to F and each one says, for example, A, fifty one windows, so fifty one windows total sixty four inches wide by seventy five inches high. B, eight windows, twenty inches wide by seventy five inches high, and then that's detailed all the way down to letter F, you know, some of these are just one window, one window, one window, ones two windows. So that's, that's right from the RFP.
So is that counted up and did, I guess.
It does not, that does not, at the end of the day, have these eleven windows that were missed.
Okay, so there is on that, there is obviously eleven windows that are missed.
Correct.
Okay, that was my question that we should have been able to track pretty easily. I didn't get a copy of that, but anything to add? Any questions, comments, thoughts?
How, how many windows was in the RFP total? Fifty four, one size?
Fifty one plus eight, fifty nine, sixty, sixty one, sixty two, sixty four.
It's all four windows, wow.
That's going off of, if, if there's nothing else on there other than this A through off, that's just this one page that I have from the RFP.
Yeah, that's all of them.
Okay.
Okay. So if, if the RFP was correct, there would have been eleven. So if if the RFP was correct, there would have been eleven more windows. There would have been a total of seventy five windows. And we would have paid for that material. Um. You know, I mean. Um, now they're, they're, they'll agree to, we buy the windows that they'll put them in for now.
With the windows and all.
Add the proper count, we would have bought seventy five to start with anyway. Instead of thinking we're only needing sixty four.
Well, so the windows, the eleven windows of the twenty three thousand one thirty, then the additional material is. Would be what, Tim? It'd be your drywall, your insulation, your trim, right?
Right. They listed all that in that change order that we had, uh.
Six sixty, sixty or sixty eight thousand dollars. Cause I, we did claims then. It was a lot. It wasn't just this twenty three thousand.
No, it wasn't just this.
No, it's all the.
It was our ten percent contingency.
Yeah, it's all the materials.
Well, all those materials we would have had to buy.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
If the number was correct.
Absolutely.
Plus the labor.
Absolutely, I get that.
Plus the labor for all of them, oh.
My only thing is we needed to dot our I's, cross our T's, see how this happened, make sure this doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
And it should have been easy to track. That's our job. How did this happen?
I'm really.
Prove that it happened and we already paid it. We are, it's already paid for, correct? I had to claim, we paid for this. At least I seen the.
For the sixty four.
Huh?
For the sixty four original. Number, right? We paid for those. We have not paid yet for the.
I'm not certain that the sixty four are paid yet. I only remember two draws on the window project. There might be three. But I remember there is still a balance in there. So I don't think you've seen the whole project come through yet.
Okay. Well, I don't like the idea that we had to go back and buy more, but we would have had to buy them all in it anyway. And all the material to go with it. If they're willing to. Not charge us to put the rest of them in. Uh, lesson learned. But, uh. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see where they're gonna be. They're making up a new price or anything like that, so. We would have had to pay for them anyway.
Commissioner Serbik.
I think it's, you know, sad that we missed that they got missed. I I had a conversation with. An individual that sent them the blueprints. He actually sent them lamp them and lamp them, converted them to PDF file. And they were sent out, so, um, and he was asked to measure by Jack Morris, asked to measure windows. And Jack Morris obviously didn't do their due diligence per the RFP. But again, we'd had to buy the windows anyway. We'd had to buy the materials. They're gonna, no labor that gonna charge us. For the additional, so I don't have any problem just leaving it the way that the resolution was in the change order.
Commissioner Mahew.
Sounds good to me. It's the only one that bids on his stuff.
Commissioner, uh, Wiltzy.
Now, I've got some real mixed feelings about this. Anytime you have additional work, it costs more money. Um. Sixty some thousand dollars for eleven windows, those materials. It's a lot of additional money. I know we've. We've approved it already. Obviously, our stance at that time was is we were. Pretty much pointing our fingers at one person. Our person's employed by the county. RFP clearly states bidders will be responsible for confirming the number, location and measurement of each. I think there needs to be more responsibility on the contractor's end.
And a reminder to us before you publicly ridicule somebody to make sure we do get both sides of the story. Cause there are always two sides. So I, we gotta pay it. It it happened. Lesson learned. Um, it could be worse.
Next time there's something, we'll just have to say, are you sure?
Yeah, I think some things are worth fighting for and I don't feel personally, I understand, I, this is wrong a hundred percent. I agree with that. But I don't feel like this is something we want to make waves, uh, with when they are trying to make it right.
I'm surprised seventy five windows.
I make one more count.
Go ahead.
Maybe, you know, moving forward to a certain projects. We really need to talk more about what that cost is for a project manager and. You know, um, I mean, obviously, again, I think through this whole process, we definitely have learned a lot. Um. And yeah, we did point some fingers and there are some other items also, um. Amongst that employee that we have talked about before and we need to see some changes. So. It's not like this is just a one time thing, but yes, we we do need to find out the facts. Um. But again. If you go off the RFP, what it clearly states, so I understand what you guys are saying. Time to move forward.
Minnesota slash controls your part.
Okay, um, first thing, because they don't want to forget it, uh, spoke with Ladonna. She got in hold of the Woodmore Prescott Schools. They would like to do Kids Day on the December eleventh meeting as opposed to those November meetings we were talking about before. Uh, and that would of course mean moving the meeting time to a day. Uh, I think in the past we started at nine o'clock. Question for the board is, are you okay with that?
That's, um. That's a regular meeting.
Right.
And can you say that again? I apologize.
The December eleventh meeting, we would move from five thirty to nine AM. And then we could do the Kids Day that we've been doing here for the last three or four years. Uh, the kids come in, they would shadow each commissioner, each department head.
That, that'll interfere with our budget, but we can res- change the time of that.
Um, I think our budget meeting is the week before.
Yeah.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Thought it was the second.
Or if it wasn't, we just bring our prospective kids with us to the budget meeting and let them see how what goes on. I mean, that's, no, it's good, I think.
It is.
You know?
No, I, that that's, yeah, I I wasn't gonna say that was a deal breaker anyways, but I was wrong on the date anyways, so. Moving on.
If I'm wrong, that's not a bad idea. We could do a budget meeting right now.
Our budget meeting is the first, right, first Thursday.
Well, we could postpone it.
Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, um, I, I, you've got two, um, reports in there. I'll touch on that in a second. The other handout that you have, it was at the last meeting, what the total amount was, uh, wage increases that were approved. Uh, and I give you a little bit more information than just that with with the handout. That total amount, and we said ten percent increase and this applies to our elected officials. And our annual employees, that total amount was eighty seven thousand nine hundred twenty nine dollars, eight cents. The rest of what you have here, because I know we've had conversations about this, you know, throughout the the process. Uh, was just comparing what the base wage change has been compared to inflation since twenty twenty one. Might as well have that too, that information with you. And of course, there's the notation there about the twenty twenty five, uh, wage increase, uh, seven hundred fifty dollars. But that was not added to, uh, the base pay. So that's why you see that sort of flattening out, uh, and then the jump. The projection for the, uh, inflation rate through twenty twenty six is just based on the last two years. Which were at two point nine percent each year. So that's as good as any, uh, at least for for comparison purposes. Uh, so that's, that's the answer to that question. And you have this if you need, uh, hand these out at township meetings or whatever, you've got it.
Thank you. I asked for that.
Thank you. Now, a few things that I want to touch on, on the written report. Um, first of all, that, you know, you mentioned the consumer's bill for this building. We did. Get a rebate for the lighting project of six thousand seven hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. So I appreciate that that was. Hundred fifty thousand, whatever it was, but it's, yeah, it was a little bit anyway that came with that. But a couple of other things on a more serious note, I've been having conversations with Judge Williams this week, prosecuting attorney and the under sheriff. About, uh, recent youth detention challenge they faced. They had, actually had two youths. Here within the last month that were, uh, particularly problematic in terms of housing. Um, they, uh, were. Uh, definitely in the, uh, custody of our, uh, law enforcement, but we had nowhere to take them. Uh, the first stop for usually when they have a, a youth in this, uh, uh, situation is over at, uh. Uh, the juvenile, uh, center across the street. And unfortunately, these two were, uh, violent to a point that that really wasn't an option. Our volunteers. Uh, um, are, are. Well, let's just say they probably wouldn't have been a challenge for a violent youth, uh, to to do harm to. And the building itself really wasn't made for. Um, containment of that type. So in this case, we're probably gonna have to contain the individuals in a room, uh, that's observed. The other thought was using some space over at the jail. But as the under sheriff pointed out, they have, uh, sight and sound limitation requirements that they must meet. And believe it or not, as big as that building is, it will not meet that criteria. So that really wasn't an option. In the more emergency case, they were able to take the juvenile over to Iosco County and they were able to, uh. Hold them over there until they can get through the court system the next day. Uh, once they're in court, of course, the judge can assign them to, uh, uh, out of county, uh, housing as needed. But it looks like at this point, we're gonna see a proposal. Sometime that's gonna make a few modifications to the Oldover Center across the street. So a stronger door. Uh, a different access to a bathroom, an observation window. Uh, that would help them to at least deal with these situations when they come up. And rather than having a volunteer. Uh. Form oversight duties for, uh, someone of this nature that we have talked to. Uh, the sheriff's office about assigning maybe a transport of Officer R two on overtime when these happen. Now, these don't happen frequently. Uh, the judge was telling me, I think they've had one over the last five years, but then suddenly in the span of six weeks, they get two. And they were repeat offenders, so it wasn't just one stop. Uh, so this is kind of drawn to everyone's attention, the need for something a little bit more secure. So heads up to the board, that's probably coming. Uh, I'm gonna say sooner rather than later. It might not come at the next county meeting. But it might be on the next cycle. The second one I wanted to point out is that the bottom starts at the bottom of page two on that report. And that's about meetings that we've had with Andrews Technology over the last week. We've had two meetings now. Uh, one on Monday and one just yesterday over the ongoing problems we've been having with, uh. UKG system recording time, particularly at the sheriff's office, particularly as it has to do with overtime. Shift differential and holiday pay. The system, since we did the changeover to UKG, just simply has not functioned. Uh, to the point that Tracy has to get into each timesheet for each payroll. To make sure everything is recorded properly. And this is exactly the step we sought to avoid by getting the system. It should be able to do all this. We got somebody's attention because in the meeting, uh, included what they called their, um. Uh, project success manager, then their chief operation officer, and then the president of Andrews Technologies. We had the three of them with the programmer who originally set all this up for us. And a new programmer, uh, that they've assigned specifically to our project. We spent probably a good hour and a half going over all of the issues that that we've encountered. And in each case, the programmers were saying, well, this isn't hard or that's easy. Uh, so we'll see. We made it very clear to them in no uncertain terms that if we don't get this cleaned up. By the end of the month or early November at the very latest, we're looking for another vendor. Uh, we've been about six months with this problem. That's plenty of time to to get it corrected. We have our ideas on what happened as some of the other changes were made. They began rippling down to other. Formulas and we're changing those formulas unintentionally. We kind of suggested that they just wipe the board clean and start over and plug in the new, uh, programming. But in any event. I'm reasonably confident coming out of this meeting. I'm glad to see that they took it, uh, seriously enough to have the three, uh. Uh, top administrative people involved. But again, we've made it pretty clear that we expect to see some change. Our next meeting is, I believe, next Wednesday. Uh, hopefully we'll see some progress there. We have opportunity to do testing before it goes live, which they will actually do at Andrews, uh. Technology to make sure everything works. I'm looking forward to the day, maybe the next period. Paid period, maybe the one after that, when all of this runs smoothly. But again, if not. Uh, we have had contact with other vendors and we will begin shopping aggressively for replacement. That'd be a shame, but you know, we kind of, uh. Anticipated some problems going into this conversion. We were one of the first to sign on. To go ahead and convert from Nova Time. You might recall that gave us a couple of, uh, free, uh, time clocks to do this. As incentive, uh, we're having second thoughts as to whether it was of value or not, but we'll, we'll see. If they work it out, it will be. We don't want to change systems if we don't have to, uh, but time's up. We've got to move on. Couple of other things, uh, just briefly, the park, um. We call it the the Veteran Memorial Park Committee that we talked about, uh. Ladonna has a meeting set up, an inaugural meeting for next Thursday at three o'clock with that group. Uh, they have, um. Uh, apparently some pretty ambitious people, so, uh, we look forward to some, uh, recommendations coming from there. Uh, we also are scheduling our Health Coalition meeting for next week with all of our new rates for Mesa, so. You know, that's right on schedule and, you know, hopefully you'll see a resolution soon on some of that. Uh, the rest, if you have any questions, you know, feel free to call me on any of the material. There are a couple of other issues in here that you'll want to read about. Um. And yes, it's been a hectic FOIA week. We've had six this week, but that's just comes with the territory.
Questions, comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, on on the light bill, the guy that come here and put the furnaces in told us some furnaces. Other than being efficient, they are not our problem.
Right.
Well, the air handlers, the controllers, to get the light bill down is what we gotta have.
Right.
And I don't know who we gotta go to look at it.
Um, I've, I've talked with our maintenance supervisor about that. Uh, these are Honeywell air handlers. They're twenty years past end of life. Almost impossible to get parts for anymore. So that's front and center on the radar, uh, probably our next big capital project, if you will. Probably is gonna involve them. Um, you, you are correct in in that, that's the problem. But I'm sure hoping when we get to heating season, that we will see some relief between the boilers and the windows.
And the lights, but the man told you, if we don't do that, we're, we gain nothing.
Yeah, so that's next up on the hit parade.
Now, like you said, I don't know, I mean, that guy there. He, he, it wasn't part of his bid, I understand. But I'm not saying that he can't do this. I don't know who you're gonna get, cause I'm sure it's a project.
Yeah, there are vendors who do that. Honeywell is the one that comes to mind. We used to have, uh, one of our other counties was Johnson Controls and they, they take care of that sort of thing. Uh, it becomes then a, you know, pretty comprehensive system where we can even automate a lot of what we do to make sure they're operating right.
Well, the lights are ducked into it. I mean, we gotta.
Yeah.
It was probably state of the art when we got it.
Probably was. Now it's trailing edge.
On your report, do you foresee more related to this Michigan Institute two of forensic science? I was reading about that.
It seems like, uh, weekly we're finding out more about that organization. I wouldn't be surprised. Fortunately for Ogumah County, we have, uh, uh, paid all of our commitments. We owe nobody anything. In this IRS case, although we did panic when we saw seventy five thousand dollar number on it, it wasn't us. But they wanted to know is to verify that we don't owe any other money. We're not holding any other money back. And of course, we couldn't because we had a court order to garnish that and send it to another place, uh, for the last couple of payments. Uh, so anyway, this is the IRS, I think, doing their due diligence to make sure when they do finally drop the hammer on that group. That they have the right amount and that nobody else owes them anything.
Any questions for Tim?
I just got.
Go ahead.
Um, as Commissioner Mahew said, and you know, we did talk about this last week, cause Tom Spencer brought up at the budget meeting. You know, regarding the air handlers and the system we have, you know, there is some engineering needs to be done so we can figure out. What is the best route? And then obviously there'd be an RFP. I'm just asking, Tim, for you to keep the throttle down on this, because also we have things in the works, you know, for. Possibly demolition of the jail, parking lots, and we need to get some ideas of what we'd be looking at. And then also Karen, if maybe next week, the committee hold, if you're available. If you're not available, maybe you could send us an email. Telling us safely where we're at with tax revolving money. And safely how you feel, how much money of that we could spend right now in a smart fashion.
I'll have the numbers sent out.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then, uh, just one more thing for Tim. Tim, I saw that email regarding the, um.
Emailed right.
Sheriff Department vehicle that was damaged. I have not seen any response back. Haven't heard anything. Is there anything?
Did get a reply from Paul and he apologized. He said, uh, uh, the. West Branch Collision kind of jumped the gun on him. It, uh, in, in went right to Diebold with that. It wasn't supposed to happen. He was supposed to, West Branch Collision was supposed to send that estimate to Paul. He was gonna complete the necessary accident report form and send that as a package over to Diebold. So I'm waiting on the. Report from Paul, once that. report from Paul. Once that's in, then we'll release the insurance carrier to do what they need to do for deductibles and reimbursements.
Do you know what day that accident?
I I have no other information on that other than what was on that form.
Okay. Well, I had to come to you because I had heard at an EMS meeting, possible damage done to a county vehicle. So this is another perfect example of just lack of consistent communication, especially from our sheriff's office. We had a law enforcement meeting not very long ago, and if this would be the case, this accident happened well before that. It is a big deal. Our county, we only have so many assets. If we have a a vehicle that's damaged significantly or at any damage, we should know about it. And the law enforcement committee should be the first ones to hear about, so we can report it back to the board if the sheriff or the undersheriff's not gonna be here. So just another example of just the lack of communication that we have from the sheriff department.
Isn't there a policy how the the time that a accident incident, however you wanna report, it has to be reported?
It's supposed to be reported within twenty-four hours. Uh but this also um is a reflection on our internal controls and that the insurance carrier is not gonna process that without word from me, which again, my trigger is that report form. And so you know, hats off to Diebold for for following through on that. Uh so at least that part working, yeah.
Any other? Any other? I I guess with that email that that we received, maybe a copy of that policy, just for a reminder that, hey, this should have been reported within a timeframe, whatever that policy, I don't recall what it is, but it was a short time that you have to report a incident.
Yeah, and we've talked about it at department head meetings too, but yeah, a perfect opportunity to bring it back up and remind everyone.
Uh elected officials in department have reports. Clerk?
Um Brett Gilney, Ogumah County Clerk. I don't have an update for my office. I just wanna thank Mr. Williams for coming out tonight to answer your guys' questions.
Uh Treasurer?
Karen Malowski, you're Ogumah County Treasurer. Um your financial reports for the quarter are on your iPads, but I wanna bring to your attention and draw your attention to the cash flow report to show you a visual of the improvement that has been made in our funds.
Yeah. It was, I know, I appreciate this. I was looking at it last time. Turned my head. I'm like, okay, how do I look at this?
There are always side ways.
Yeah, sorry, so it goes to the scanner, but you can see the visual improvement that we've made financially with this county over the last few years. Um more specifically, cash at September thirtieth, which normally is a half a million dollars in the red, without any type of fancy journal entries that we're gonna post on September thirtieth and reverse on October one, which has been done for decades. This is true cash, two million, one forty-four, one sixty-eight to the positive on September thirtieth.
You say that again, how much?
Two million, one forty-four, one sixty-eight and twenty-two cents on September thirtieth. Now, truly, that's unofficial until the audit's complete because there will be journal entries that are posted that may may adjust that figure, but the important thing is it's not a half a million in the red. It is two million in the black. And that is a huge improvement for this county. So I wanted to give you the visual and make sure you look at that touch load chart. It really does show the improvement happening for this county.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And then on our iPads, we have the Building Inspection Department, September twenty twenty-five report, Ogumah County DHHS, September twenty twenty-five report, Information Technology, September twenty twenty-five report, inmate housing, September twenty twenty-five report, and then the Treasurers reports. Those are appreciated, so thank you. Uh Manors on the floor? Motion for adoption?
Would have both.
I, so we were, I was gonna ask her.
Ready when you guys are.
Is he on the, is?
I have to call him.
Oh, go ahead. So we're gonna go back to our canvassers. And this is Ed Miller that we have on the phone, and he is a Democrat candidate, correct?
Right.
Hi, is this Ed?
Yes, it is.
Oh, yeah. This is Jenny David. How are you?
Not too bad. How are you doing?
I'm good. We have you on speaker with the other commissioners. And you are a possibility for the Democratic Party.
Yeah, for canvasser?
Correct. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I'm a small business owner here in uh Ogumah County. Uh obviously, I am a Democrat. Uh I've worked quite a few elections. I've been an election inspector for quite a few years now. I have never done canvassing work, but uh you know, I'm willing to learn. My question to you would be, is there a training program that would bring me up to snub on what the job entails and what my duties would be?
The clerk is shaking her head. Yes, absolutely.
And uh I'm seventy-three years old. Uh married to Sandy, who's been the supervisor up here in uh Foster Township for quite a few years. She's she's retired now. Uh so we've been involved, but uh it's something that I I was asked if I would be interested in it, and and the answer is, yeah, I would like to try it, see what it's all about. I have, like I said, never done it before. But uh that doesn't mean that uh I can't, you know, train for it and wouldn't enjoy it.
Questions?
I have none.
Commissioner Serbuk?
None.
Commissioner Mayhew?
No.
Commissioner Scott?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Wiltie?
I have no questions.
Thank you for your time, sir.
That's it? Okay. Very good. Uh if you have any other questions, feel free to call.
Thank you.
All righty. Have a great day.
You do. Bye. Someone like to entertain a motion? I believe the Republican was Mariah. That's
Maria.
Maria, I'm sorry. That's her last name?
Here and then. Here on then.
Easy for you to pronounce.
I've been saying it for a few years.
For both?
Yeah.
Parties or do you want one motion for each party?
Let's do one motion for each party.
Okay, well, then I'll make a motion to uh to nominate Maria Urien and then
For.
Who are the Republican Party.
We have a motion on the table.
Support.
With support from Commissioner Serbuk. Any further discussion? And you have heard from her. She is interested.
Hmm.
She's a continuation, correct?
Hmm.
Okay, that's what I All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ed Miller to the Democratic uh side of the canvassers.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serbuk. Conversation.
Now, there's only one position available for
Correct.
Yeah, there is. I um I received communication from the chairman, uh Mr. Dale Sheltron. He asked me to and explained to me his reasons why he would like to see Mr. Miller on. I've known Dale for years. Uh I would back up his recommendation.
Was he aware that uh Mr. Williams was interested?
I don't know, but I know that they know each other very well. They're Democrats.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Um I know Mr. Williams and his family have been involved in Ogumah County um government for a long time. And I feel he would do a really good job, and that's who I support.
I do, I will add that Mr. Shelton made contact with me as well, and he uh recommended that we have Mr. Miller appointed, so.
I guess I hate to do this, but I'm going to cuz I don't know, nobody reached out to me at all. So first of all, thank you for being here, but is Mr. Sheltron, which I've met him, but I don't know him personally, and he did not, again, reach out to me and have a conversation with me about this. It, would you be okay working with Mr. Shelton on the canvassers? He's a chair?
Oh, well. I don't even know whose position is up really, just I received two nominations from any student or somebody, and I got the uh application I filled out and I'm here today.
There's
Go ahead.
There's just, there's a one Democratic position and one Republican position open this time around. Dale would be already placed. He's already there.
He's already.
His position is not open this year.
But he's not a Democrat one.
There is one Democrat open position today. And you're applying for it. Mr. Miller is applying for it.
I've known Dale.
Yeah, forever. Yeah.
Commissioner, Mayhew, do you have an opinion? We have Mr. Williams and we have Mr. Miller.
Right, what do you want? Do we nominate him too, or?
We can, there's only one position. And right now, the nomination is for Mr. Miller.
Yeah.
We'll we'll take a vote on that.
Well, we're not there yet.
No.
Now we're having a conversation. Yes.
So we take a vote on that. If he wins, we're done. If we don't, we can nominate him.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Do you have an opinion?
No, I don't know. Nobody reads it to me.
Correct. Nobody reached out to me neither. The only thing is, is Mr. Williams is here, and then I also appreciate the fact that he he sought this position. He wasn't sought out. So that's that's my, I know nothing else about any of it, but he actually was interested, did the research, did the debt, did did everything, and I I again, I know nothing at all, but that's that's why I'm gonna go with Mr. Williams is because he actually he wasn't sought after. To me, that's pretty important, so.
If, can I say something?
Yes.
Um I I feel like Mr. Williams has a lot of experience in election-related everything. If I had a, and Dale did not reach out to me, um I would prefer Mr. Williams as well, but you guys are the ones that are voting.
We'll call vote. Wait, now we have on the table for uh Mr. Miller.
Yeah.
Uh Mark Serber.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
No.
Roger Mayhew.
No.
Charles Wiltie.
No.
Would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll entertain a motion. Um for the canvasser, Democratic physician. Mr. John Williams.
Guard.
Motion with support, discussion. We'll call vote.
Uh Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Condolences.
Commissioners, Commissioners report.
Oh, holy.
Commissioner Serbuk at the floor.
Oh. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Be in touch.
I did claims, which we've already covered, obviously. Um Commissioner Mayhew and I both attended the West Branch Township meeting last night. West Branch Township has decided that they are going to officially send a letter to us as the Ogumah County Board of Commissioners revoking the inter-local agreement, intergovernmental agreement for land divisions. They are gonna take responsibility for doing their own land divisions starting January the first. They cited uh several reasons for that. And Mr. Booth was here, and he's glad that West Branch Township's gonna be doing their own land divisions. Uh and Commissioner Scott and I had Parks and Rec this morning, and we pretty much covered the topic of parking, Parks and Recreation already. So that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mayhew.
Oh. If I could find it all, but uh they said Rose City got a grant to get the you know, Mill Pond, the dam out. Pretty good sized grant.
To get what?
The, there's a dam up to call it the Mill Pond.
Yep.
And they're gonna take that out.
They're gonna redo it re?
Yeah, they, it's like three point eight million or something. It it's a big job.
It's a big gap. They're not gonna replace the dam though, are they?
They're taking it out or they're replacing, fixing it?
I think it's gonna out.
Okay.
They've tried, like, yeah, I don't understand it all, but they've had it and they've tried to uh to redo it, and I think this was for taking it out.
Yeah, cuz that's been an ongoing issue.
Yeah.
Thirty years up there at least.
Fifty.
Mid-gaff.
Mid-gaff. And yeah, I went to the one last night and the marijuana facility at Walmart's supposed to open Saturday.
Their grand opening is Saturday. They're already open, but they're having that grand opening.
Whatever it is, yeah.
They're, if that's what they told us.
They got up here.
With the twenty-six percent tax.
Yeah, that that's pretty well it.
Commissioner Scott?
Okay, um I Parks and Rec was this morning to add on to that at the nature park um uh last month, I I had a a deer farmer. I guess is the best way to call it. He raises deer, whitetail deer from the U upper peninsula. He came to our site and took a look at it, took a look at our deer. He's, he he was very impressed with our fencing and our whole project there. Well, and told us that there was some of our bucks even had some value, but the problem is um we can't get any of the value from them because we have an exhibition license and we cannot sell or take deer away from our facility. So um it's time to renew our license right now. And uh it was, uh Tim was helping me out here, and we're going to go to stage, our our stage four licensing, which would be a full, full licensing. And at that point, we can uh we can uh sell animals if we want. Um the man told told me that we had a couple of them worth probably seven thousand dollars a piece. And uh because they'd be good breeding stock, so um that sounded pretty good, could help fund the park a little bit better. There are, of course, uh some strings attached there. We'd have to have all the animals TB tested before one could leave, leave. But uh uh they, it may happen. Uh the High Banks over in Mill Township, uh uh Dan Johnson reported to us that he has gotten all the IRS paperwork now, and there is a nonprofit group now uh available to take fundraising for uh to help with uh expenses at the park. Um so separate, separate from the Parks and Rec Committee, but there is a five-one-C three group now um organized. So uh uh I also went to my township meeting, Ogumah Township uh this week. And uh they brought up uh flight ordinance and had a public hearing on it, and there was for for a few people in the room, there was quite a bit of comment about it. So they're gonna take it back, work on it some more. Um and refine it, I guess is the best word. Um so um other than that, they had some road issues and stuff they're taking care of and things like that. I did go to the road commission meeting. Other than that compensation, they talked about uh they talked about uh some of the projects that are wrapping up for the end of the year. Things are coming together pretty good, I guess. They are ordering some trucks. Um lease cars are pretty cheap compared to what road commission trucks are. Holy smokes, they were talking about uh two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and that wasn't the trucks. That was everything bolted out to the top of the truck. The whole truck, they're talking like four hundred thousand dollars a piece. Uh they they are going to uh order one truck with two side blades. It'll be one of the freeway trucks so that he can drop a, drop a uh side plow on for on either side or both. Matter of fact, they were talking, they could drop both of them and do an exit ramp in one swipe by pushing the snow off both ways. I thought that was pretty neat, you know? Um so uh uh two, two trucks will be ordered for the uh state roads, freeway and the state roads and one for the local roads. And they don't suspect to get these till the end of twenty-six.
Wow.
Stuff is backed up so much. They said that one county downstate, I don't know if it's McComb or Oakland or something, but they ordered like forty-eight trucks. They they went to the factory and they saw the order for like forty-eight trucks. But we're gonna fix these damn roads, you know? So uh I have Foster Township next week. Uh I have not been to the city uh this, this uh this month yet. But I think they have a they have another meeting. They have two meetings a month. I, you'd need to attend one. I stir them and stir them up enough not to go two times. So uh So, uh, geez, I think that was about it. Well, we did host the, uh, what do we call that? The Heartland?
Heartland, uh, Material Management Planning Committee.
Yeah, we hosted it here in our county, uh, at the Annex Building. It's going, it's going nowhere and it's going there fast. You know, this is the thing I, you know, I've said all along, I mean, this is the, uh, uh, state government, let's do the right thing kind of program and we'll promise you a bunch of funding and I don't see where it's going, you know? Um, one old, uh, I shouldn't say it, a former em- uh, employee at Waste Management, uh, an employee at Waste Management that I worked there, worked with formerly, she is from the landfill side. I talked with her. She's optimistic something's gonna happen, but I just, I just don't really see it. Transportation up this way kills us, kills us bad. It's, it makes, it makes the, the, the cost go up so high that there, I just don't see the value. And we're not gonna do it on a municipal level. We'll have, any recycling app to be done through the private sector. So, they still have meetings and they're, they're doing some Zoom. I think we're, we're talking seven, eight counties. Don't like that, seven, eight counties, yeah. So.
Commissioner Wiltie.
Uh, that kind of pretty light report. Uh, last week we had an LE meeting. I am happy to report that, uh, the Sheriff's Department has hired a animal control officer. A younger individual by the name of Dakota Masters. He is an Ogumon County resident. Um, he is hired, he's training. And it sounds like there's a good possibility if everything goes well, uh, he'll be on the road in November at some point, so. Happy to hear that. Um, hopefully, uh, Dakota is gonna fit right in and do a really good job in that animal control position. Um, one thing I had noticed is they did hire for that part-time secretary position, yet they have failed to tell us about that. Uh, there was no report of that position last Thursday at the LE meeting, but that position has been filled and that individual is working, so hopefully we'll get some information soon on that. Uh, building security this past Wednesday, um, I'm gonna ask Tim, if you could just comment on the active nine-one-one. I know it's, the threshold is, I think it's even a hundred, under a thousand dollars, so we don't need to prove it, but could you just comment on that real quick? Because it is very, very important.
Yeah, what the system will do will allow us to put our employee cell phone numbers, uh, you know, file with dispatch center. So if we do have an incident, say in this building that we need to do a lockdown on, or if there was some weather-related event, we just need to contact, uh, dispatch center and they will push the button and will push a message out and probably, uh, preset message, so the dispatcher isn't gonna have to be there, you know, typing up, you know, whatever wording we want. If it's a lockdown, it will simply say lockdown. Uh, but it is a system that's already part of the CAD system over there, so we're not buying any new, uh, um, component, uh, to that, but there is, uh, the, um, kinda like the user fee, I guess it will, as Commissioner Wiltie said, it's under a thousand dollars. Our threshold, of course, is fifteen hundred, so we're gonna be able to, uh, make this happen administratively, uh, between, uh, Tom and IT and, uh, um, Mike Bowers, uh, and Jesse at nine-one-one. This should be relatively quick fix.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. It's very important that we have that in place. And I know Tom said he was gonna get together as soon as possible. Um, building security, we have two new hires, uh, for security court, security, um, sound like, uh, bringing a lot of experience to the table, so that was good to see. Uh, Opiate Settlement Committee, we had our meeting right before today's meeting. Uh, we went over the six RFPs that were brought to the table at last month's meeting. Uh, we as a committee, and of course it's gonna come to us next, um, we did strongly agree on three of the six. Uh, we feel that they're gonna be great programs. Um, it's still underneath the amount of money we wanted to spend on year one. So you guys will all hear about those programs with more explanation from Tim and myself, uh, next Thursday. Uh, Budget Committee meeting we had last Thursday, um, again, it was great to see everyone at the table. I know Karen would have been there, but she was on vacation. Um, but I think between the Budget Committee and obviously the hard decisions that we've had to make here as commissioners, you heard Karen talk about our cash flow. Um, pretty amazing what we've done in a matter of a little over a year. I know that came with some real hard decisions. But I think we should feel really good about the direction we're heading and staying united where we can continue to go. We've done some pretty amazing things financially in a short amount of time, so. Kudos, everybody involved, Budget Committee has been strong, everyone's been showing to the table, been great to see. Um, that's all I got.
I attended Michigan Works. Uh, they're, they're a little concerned about some budget cutting that, that is probably going to happen. There will be more information to come on that. Did serve out and I, I forgot to bring it. Um, how many, how many individuals were served in the past month at Michigan Works? I just tell everybody to try to remember, um, Michigan Works is a huge asset. Their budget's fairly large. They offer a lot of resources. Uh, tomorrow I'm actually going to Career Quest. They, this is their biggest event of the year down at Saginaw Valley at the Rider Center. Um, it's for high school students, a lot of, and I don't recall the exact number, uh, high schools go down there tomorrow. That is sponsored by Michigan Works. Uh, lots of different careers, lots of hands-on. This is my first time going to this. Um, so I'm pretty excited to see, uh, this, I guess it's a very, very large event. So they take up the entire Rider Center for the majority of the day and I believe it's freshmen and sophomores from all the surrounding communities go down for this. Different careers, various things, so. I will get back to you on that. Uh, nine-one-one meeting I had last night. They are looking at, uh, a phone system to help with the admit line. A lot of scam calls come through, so right now we're just asking a lot of questions. This is something that a lot of other, um, nine-on-ones already have in place. So we've asked for a rap to come, uh, next meeting because there are some questions that the board members have. The radios were an issue with the fire departments, the VHS, VHF, uh, versus eight-hundred radios. There's still fire departments that, uh, I think there's three, three or four, three fire departments that have not upgraded to the eight-hundred radios. There's been a grant that I guess is being wrote for those radios. But in the last storm, one of the towers, uh, for the VHF support got hit. Um, we haven't got the bill for that, but I will inform you of that amount. Uh, Jesse said it's gonna be a pretty large bill, so that's another reason that these upgrades are so, so vital. Um, she's also converted over to QuickBooks. She's doing an amazing job with that. She wanted to be doing pretty much everything by October one and she is, uh, learning more on as far as reports. Uh, she's gonna have a lot of information when she gets this down, but uh, Logan was last night. I talked to the supervisor there, not a lot going on. Um, Churchill, pardon me?
Where?
Logan Township.
Oh, you got a chance to talk to the supervisor?
I did.
That's great.
So I did go to Churchill on Monday. A couple of things with Churchill, they have a blight issue going on over there, uh. It's kind of an interesting case because the resident has deceased. Uh, there are some family members that are squatters that are living there, paying the taxes on it, so right now there's not a lot that they can do, but they're doing some, it's, it's a pretty, pretty rough, rough, rough area, so they are gonna be doing some things. Um, it's just gonna be a little bit of process, but it was interesting to hear a deceased and the squatters and the taxes and anyways, um, they talked about some roads over there at Logan or at Churchill. They, uh, wanted to bring up, there was three of us, four of us there at the MTA meeting at Churchill, or excuse me, the last MTA meeting at Mills Township. So some things have came about since that MTA meeting. Um, for you, for us that was there, they brought up a township that had not paid their dues. Um, which is a hundred dollar dues for the MTA. They made it pretty obvious that it was Churchill. I think we all knew it sitting there. Um, Churchill Township, uh, was pretty uncomfortable with this situation. They made a simple phone call, asked a few questions. They were curious. Their, their main issue was the bylaws related to the MTA meetings. They wanted to know if this was a public meeting. If they could still come if they don't pay the hundred dollar dues. It was a simple phone call that, that one of them made and it has escalated. It escalated to the point where they received a letter that I have a copy from, from an attorney that the MTA chairperson, um, requested a legal opinion on. Churchill Township did not wish to seek any type of legal, all they had was a simple question is can we still attend these meetings? They had a question related to the hundred dollar dues. What do you do with these dues? What have you used in the past with these dues? The, the money that, that's currently there, which if I remember, and I think I just got a report, it's like twenty-nine hundred dollars. I just got an email on it. There's twenty-nine hundred dollars in the bank. They said, hey, you know, what, what do you, what do you do with those? What, what, what's the plan? What are you paying? It's not a big deal, but it has escalated literally from a simple question to a legal opinion that is gonna cost somebody some money. And I believe they figured the bill, which I'm not sure how they know that quite yet, is gonna be about three hundred dollars. So, they thought since you hosted, which they hosted the meeting, I went to it, I think it was last July, that if you host a meeting, then you don't necessarily have to pay your dues. So they were planning on hosting in November was their original plan, but, uh, since they re- received a legal opinion, um, they don't really know what to do. So I did tell them I was gonna bring this up. They were kinda hesitant about it because they don't want even more of a wave made out of this. You know, this is a pretty efficient, good board. They really truly are. Um, I go to four townships, a village, I, I, two of the board members have been on there a very long time, Lynn Cavallunas and Linda Miller. Uh, they do a very good job. They have a new supervisor that, it's been a learning curve. How sad that something so simple has came from, from that. And again, they were, it, it was uncomfortable. I was there. It should have been brought up privately. It should not have been made to everybody in the entire meeting. Uh, there was quite a few meeting, quite a few people at that MTA meeting, so they're, they're, they're pretty upset about it. Uh, they plan on replying to this to the, uh, entire MTA board, um, because I don't know if everybody was CC'd on that. Uh, just a simple letter saying, hey, we, we just wanted to know if it's a public meeting, if we can come without being kicked out. So, anyways. I told them I was gonna gently bring it up, so I did.
So, what's the opinion of the attorney? Is it a public meeting or is it?
You know, I read through it and it's, it's obviously attorney language is kind of how you wanna interpret it. So.
Didn't answer the question.
I don't know how it can, it, it says with an MTA that it's, uh, while the chapter is composed of elected officials, the chapter itself is not public body. It is not established by constitution, statute, or ordinance. Um, and, and it goes on, and I have a copy, if you wanna see it. So again, you probably could get a different opinion from somebody else. So I don't know how it would not be a public meeting when everybody brings a friend or a guest, or you have the right to. So, uh, something so, so simple escalated when it didn't need to, I guess was my point of all of that. So, questions? I derailed, I apologize.
I think, I, I haven't called Kowalski there, the chairman, but I think they should, I think they should contact somebody, maybe MSU Extension or somebody and get somebody that knows Open Meetings Act and pay them to come and tell them about some things, uh, about Open Meetings Act and, and closed sessions and things. I know in Foster Township, they went into closed session. Well, they were starting to air out some laundry and I says, I, I says, I think you should go into closed session. You can for this, this thing. It was an employee issue. And, uh, they did, but they didn't understand that they couldn't make motions and vote during that time. They did. And then they had to turn around and resend those motions to the next meeting and then make those motions publicly. Um, I don't know if those, all those, uh, uh, all those, uh, motions would have came out publicly after a closed session because, you know, if you're back open again. But I think that that's one thing that I think the, the townships in this, in this county would benefit from is, is somebody with Open Meetings Act.
I think that should be an annual learning curve for everybody.
I think it, I think it should be, yeah. But, you know, so many of these townships, they, they have their little meetings and stuff like that and, and then they're walking in all prepared.
Before the media, they come out of the.
Yeah.
Like a hump.
Yeah.
And I, I find that rather interesting because it wasn't that long ago that the MTA magazine had a six-page spread on
Absolutely.
Open Meetings Act.
Absolutely.
So obviously nobody's reading it at that level. Somebody didn't. I mean, I read it all. I, you know, it parallels everything that, that we've been told as well. So I mean, I thought that that article did a really good job of explaining when you can go into closed session, what you can discuss, what you can't discuss, you know?
Contact that author. Tell them, hey, we'll put you up a room up here.
Exactly.
And I don't want this escalating. I think, and Churchill said that last night, how valuable, they really enjoy these MTA meetings. I think everybody does, so I don't want anything bad coming out of this. It was just a simple question that has escalated, but I, you know, think, thankfully, we have a leader that keeps us out of trouble as our teams.
The problem is, I enjoy going to and we don't have to say, the, the, the problem.
And the meals are fantastic, I'm sorry, the meals are fantastic and that's a cost. I mean, they really.
I would chip in twenty dollars toward one-fifth of the.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The, the problem is that that phone call was made to an attorney. So that's what, so it was one of those where they were, from what I understand.
It was a personal phone call.
But it was, it was to an attorney.
Was to an attorney. After hours.
And there was, my understanding that, that there was some question.
I asked.
And that's how this whole attorney thing got involved because it was like, all right, you get an attorney, I'm not gonna answer without my attorney.
I just told you what happened. They asked for a copy of the bylaws. That's the only thing they asked for. That was it. A copy and it has escalated from there. So.
Yeah, it's crazy. Over a hundred dollars.
Over a hundred dollars. Any, and, yes, anyways, okay. Any public comment? Sorry.
I got one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Committee on Aging. They told me they're still glad the building paid for this year.
Oh, good.
They're pretty happy.
That's good.
Gonna have a merge burning ceremony?
Any public, any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn, I will not be here next week.
Next week?
Nope, oh, motion to adjourn.
Quite sure if I'm gonna make it either, so. I have surgery today before.
Oh, geez. There's no way you're gonna.
No, no, next week. That's right. Next week I will.
We already figured this out.
So next week, yeah, okay.
Yeah, right.
All right.
Both.
Okay.